Regular meeting of the Thurston County Planning Commission. Okay, all right. I'll start this over. Welcome to the November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two regular meeting of the Thurston County Planning Commission. The Thurston County Planning Commission is a citizens advisory committee to the Board of County Commissioners on land use planning matters such as the Comprehensive Plan and zoning ordinance amendments. Planning Commission actions are in the form of recommendations to the county commissioners who are the final decision makers. All Planning Commission meetings are open to the public. Citizens are welcome to observe all Planning Commission briefings and work session. We welcome public comment on those topics for which a public hearing has not been held. My name is Eric Casino. I'm the season's chair and I reside in District Two. We'll start the rest of the introductions of the planning commissioners here in the boardroom. And then on Zoom, we'll start down with Commissioner.
Joel Hanson, District Three.
One.
Scott Nelson, District Three.
Jim Simmons, District Three.
Doug Carmen, District Two.
Derek Day, One.
And Commissioner Pessier, are you online? No? Or Commissioner Halverson?
Neither.
No.
All right. Well, with that, as everybody had a chance to look over the meeting minutes, and if so, entertain a motion.
Oh, I skipped the agenda. So it's not on here.
But has everybody looked over the agenda?
Yes, but I would like to see added to the agenda.
Okay, is there a second on that?
Second.
The agenda has been seconded. Can we call for the vote?
Commissioner Hanson.
Hi.
Commissioner Wheatley.
Hi.
Commissioner Nelson.
Hi.
Commissioner Simmons.
Hi.
Commissioner Carmen.
Hi.
Commissioner Day.
Hi.
Commissioner Casino.
All right, so the agenda is accepted. Has everybody had a chance to look over the meeting minutes? Is there any discussion?
I move we approve the meeting minutes and accept the audio as official recording. All set.
It's been. And seconded to accept the, to approve the meeting minutes and accept the audio as the official meeting record. Also vote.
Commissioner Hanson.
Bye.
Commissioner Nelson.
Bye.
Commissioner Simmons.
Bye.
Commissioner Carmen.
Bye.
Commissioner Day.
Bye.
Commissioner Casino.
All right, the meeting minutes have been accepted. With that, we're going to move on to the public communication portion of our meeting. And I do want to let everybody know that this is for the portion for general planning commission topics, not for the Grand Mountain area. We'll be open up the hearing for the Grand Mountain subarea plan. We'll be taking comments on that particular subject at that time, which will happen soon after this. But if there's anybody here in the boardroom that would like to address us first. Which would be. These don't look like they're going to be for the Grand Mountain subarea plan. So is anybody in the boardroom like to address the Planning Commission on non-Grand Mountain stuff? How about online? Is there anybody that would like to address the Planning Commission on non-Grand Mountain? Subvery plant issues? I can't read that.
Timothy.
Timothy, you have three minutes. Oh, Timothy, you'll have three minutes as soon as they upgrade you to, there we go. You got to unmute yourself.
Okay, got it. I believe Timothy Leadingham of Olympia. I'd like to just make a few comments about the forests, the importance of forests in the county and importance to your comprehensive plan. The best figure I can find for total forest in the county is about two hundred and thirty-five thousand acres. Much of this is state forest land and some of it is already conserved by land trusts such as the Nisqually Land Trust. The remaining private forest land is threatened by conversion to urban development. The Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan expresses a goal of increasing carbon sequestration by three hundred and seventy-five thousand tons of CO2 annually by 2050. Although some additional sequestration is possible from agriculture and prairie conservation, the bulk of it would have to be found in forest land conserved from development. My analysis indicates that up to forty thousand acres of private forest threatened by development would need to be conserved to achieve the T C M P goal by 2050. One example is one hundred and seven acres of forest just north of Greg Q U Park in Lacey for sale for one point nine million dollars. How could the county and cities finance such a conservation project? The State Community Forest Program is one possible financing means. The Climate Commitment Act Carbon Credits is another possible source of funding. There is an organization called City Credits that King County and others have used to finance community forest conservation projects. A public-private partnership which involves individual landowners, businesses, developers, excuse me, large corporations such as Microsoft and P S E could make purchases or land donations and fund conservation easements. State and federal funding may be available through the Inflation Reduction Act. Private forest landowners could also be encouraged to pursue separately carbon credits in the private voluntary market. I urge you to consider such a proposal to achieve our common goals for the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan and for our grandchildren's future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It does not look like there's anybody else online that would like to provide testimony today, so we will move on to the next item of business on our agenda, which is new business, which is a work session on the topic of Thurston twenty forty-five, our new comprehensive plan program with Maya T. Vols. Thank you, Maya.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Maya T. Vols, Senior Planner with Community Planning. I'm gonna go ahead and do my best to share my screen. Let's see if I can put full screen for everyone now. Yes, great. So tonight I'm here to talk to you about Thurston twenty forty-five, which is the county's comprehensive plan periodic update. And we are just kicking this effort off, so I'm very excited to be bringing this to you tonight for discussion. Today's work session is informational only. We don't need any decisions from the Planning Commission, but we're beginning to introduce this to the community, so you may begin hearing about it. And we will go over the public participation plan and the general timeline for the project as well as the immediate next steps. So we are coining this periodic update Thurston twenty forty-five, and the periodic update is the required update under state law that occurs on a ten-year cycle. And that update is primarily to bring the comprehensive plan and our development regulations into compliance with state law and up to date with updated population projections. It plans for the next twenty years, so we will be planning to the year twenty forty-five. And it ensures consistency with new changes to Washington State Growth Management Act. And this update will be due June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, so a couple of years from now, but time passes real quickly and these updates can take a lot of effort, so we begin them early. So Thurston County has an annual amendment process, which is a different process from the periodic update, but these are the two pathways where our comprehensive plan is amended. So the periodic update, as I said, is a ten-year cycle. It was previously on an eight-year cycle, but this is the big update. This really looks at all of the new changes to state law, new population projections, and adjusts policies and data within the plan so that it is ensuring we can provide services for the growing population and brings us up to speed with any changes in state law. The annual amendment process, which is what we do through our documenting process, is an optional process. So counties and other jurisdictions are not required to do annual amendments. They can simply do periodic updates, but Thurston County does have this option for our citizens. And in Thurston County, what we see most often are our land use and zoning requests for site-specific locations. But the annual amendments are really a pathway for community members in Thurston County to request changes. And we take these applications on an ongoing basis. So every year by November fifteenth, we'll take all those applications and then bring them to the board to help create our document. Changes to the comprehensive plan, whether they be through a periodic update or an annual amendment process, can only be adopted by our Board of County Commissioners once per year. So we are limited to changes once a year, and that's to encourage considering things cumulatively and in coordination with each other. So what is a comprehensive plan? The comprehensive plan guides and establishes principles for how and where development occurs. And it is really the visionary document of the community. So what do we want our community to look like in twenty years from now, when many people who are just born could be entering into college? And some folks who are in the height of their career could be getting ready to retire. There are thirteen planning goals under state law, and I won't read through all of these, but just to note a few: affordable housing, natural resource industries, environmental protection, property rights, and concentrating urban growth. We have competing planning goals, so we are required to plan for these and balance these different goals under state law. And it is a balancing act because, you know, the prime agricultural land may also be where someone wants to build their home, and we're required to balance those types of goals throughout the comprehensive plan. The last periodic update, some of you may remember, it was pretty recent. We finished it in twenty nineteen, so only three years ago. And that was because we were a little bit late getting started on that. So even though we finished that one later, we should have a little bit less since we are closer up to date with state law for twenty nineteen. So background on Thurston County's comprehensive plan. We have thirteen chapters and several appendices, but our chapters are broken down into what you see on the slides. So land use, natural resource lands, housing, transportation, capital facilities. And most of these speak directly to the elements that are required in the comprehensive plan under state law. There are a couple of chapters that fit into our rural element that we're required to have. So by and large, they speak one-to-one for the elements that we need or stay with, with the exception of a few. And some of these chapters are not required, but we have them in our plan anyway, so economic development is kind of an extra and then the open space piece. Both of those don't have funding under state law, but we updated those in our twenty nineteen update. And so public participation plan, this is what I really want to focus on tonight. We're required to do engagement and outreach for comprehensive planning early and often. And the goal is to reach as many people as possible and get as many people as possible in the community involved in the update. So there's kind of three tiers to this. The first is the bottom tier, which is to make sure that information is easily accessible. So people can get it on the internet. They see flyers in the community. Wide range of availability to folks who are interested in learning about it. The second is to bring awareness and inform the community of the changes. This is going out to the community, talking to them, talking to interest groups, one-on-one conversations with citizens. And the third is to encourage the community to take action and to provide input at community meetings through surveys that we have and by commenting at public hearings like we have tonight. And so we will be doing public engagement from now throughout the life of the comprehensive plan update. And there are different levels of engagement that I'll drill over in this presentation. So going into the public engagement a little bit more, we are currently in the scoping period, which we're planning on doing from late this year until early twenty twenty-three. And we don't have a scope yet, but it's in development. So right now staff is working on going through the commerce checklists that are provided by Department of Commerce, and that just does a sweep of our comprehensive plan and our development regulations to see where we need to make updates to be in consistency with state law. And then we also have a survey going on with the community. Originally, we had this through November thirtieth, but we've extended it through the end of the year. So if anyone from the public is listening, you have until December thirty-first of this year to participate in this survey, and I would encourage everyone who's on to go take it. It's about a five to ten-minute survey. And it's really for the community to identify what is important to them, what are their highest priorities over the next twenty years. We also have a project webpage that will be updated throughout the life of the project to share information. We've done a couple of social media posts about the survey. And then there is a project-specific email list for Thurston twenty forty-five already. So if there are members of the public who don't necessarily want to receive all planning updates, they can go opt-in to just learn about this project. And we've got a number of folks already signed up on that. And after we get public feedback from the survey, in early twenty twenty-three, we'll be looking at what the public identified as their highest priorities. And then we'll take that to the Board of County Commissioners to help shape the scope of work for the Thurston twenty forty-five project. So the second stage is going to be spring of next year until spring of twenty twenty-four, and this is where we really get our hands dirty and start updating the plan, doing research, reviewing information. But this is also the piece of the project where staff is going out to the community, doing public open houses in general locations, sharing information with specific stakeholder and community groups, so that may mean presenting to smaller groups, whatever they're interested in and specific topics to them, information sharing table at events like the Thurston County Fair. And then targeted outreach to interested parties. So I've already started working on connecting with certain groups, and hopefully we'll be able to connect more if there are interested parties in specific topics. And then for this stage of the process, we did this with our last update, and this was a great way to get people involved, but we plan on doing a photo contest again for Thurston twenty forty-five, where people can submit their photos on specific topics. And we will select some winners, and then they may be featured in the plan. Planning Commission review will begin likely in early twenty twenty-four and go throughout most of that year. And during the Planning Commission review process, in addition to having written comment periods, planning commission meetings and public hearings, we'll also continue to hold open houses both online and in person and meet with community groups as they express interest in having updates. And then the fourth stage is the board review and final action. And similarly to the Planning Commission review process, we'll continue doing open houses online and in person at this stage and meeting with community groups as they request. By this point in the process, we usually have a pretty well-formed plan, so we are rather than taking that visionary information in from the community, presenting on what the major changes are and how folks can share their feedback on that. And as I mentioned, final action is June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. So that's the date under state law that Thurston County is required to have a complete submitted comprehensive plan to Washington State Department of Commerce. And this is just a summary. So kicking off now in early twenty twenty, late twenty twenty-two, and then all the way through twenty twenty-five. Again, public outreach at every step along the way, just different types of public engagement. And so I do want to take a minute to talk about reaching underrepresented groups. So I was here working on the last comprehensive plan update, and we are trying to reach as many people as possible with Thurston twenty forty-five. We want, you know, ideally, we would hear from everyone. But the reality is we don't get participation from everyone. So at the very least, we can do our best to spread information as far and wide as possible and make it easy for people to share their feedback if that's something that they would like to do. And I've already been working on identifying a couple of groups that have been typically underrepresented in our planning projects. So a few of those are the BIPOC group, which is Black Indigenous and Persons of Color, tribal communities, communities that have English as a second language, and also the younger generation. We don't typically see students getting involved in our updates. And we are strategizing, me and public outreach team, and we are also working with the equity person in the commissioner's office to see if we can do better in certain aspects as well and plan through this process. But some of our tools that we will be planning on using, the first is for the survey that is currently out. We have the survey translated into three languages, so English, Spanish, and Vietnamese, Spanish and Vietnamese, because those are the second most common languages in Thurston County. And we also have flyers in the three languages. And so a team of us are going out and fliering certain businesses that are allowing us to post the flyers in their language, in their home language, and also in English. We're dropping flyers off at libraries all over the community around the county. So we've got all the areas of the county covered from southwest to northeast. And we'll see how successful that is in getting members of other communities to take surveys in four languages. This is the first time we've really done this, so it's really exciting to have that out there. And then other things we'll be doing throughout the comp plan update, as I mentioned, reaching out to specific groups. So reaching out to the Asian Pacific Islanders, La Mesa Roundtable, the South Sound BIPOC, People of Color Coalition, and then C A Low, and seeing if we can post flyers and also present to those groups if they'll have us at any of their events or a table, or however we can get involved and share information with us. I have also been connecting with the tribes, and so I have heard back already from the Chahalas tribe, and they will be sending out the flyer and survey through their Facebook and to their team. I've worked with my contact down there. We have a plan of how I'll continue to keep them updated and they can participate through comments throughout the process. And we do have House Bill seventeen seventeen, which is a new requirement for tribal public engagement under state law. Charts have the option to initiate an M O U, but it's not a requirement. If they don't do that, that does not preclude them from participating in this process. They can still comment and be engaged, you know, however is most suitable for them. So we're already in contact with those folks, and then into twenty twenty-three will be where staff is really going out and presenting to the community. And next steps, so as I mentioned, we have a survey that's open. It's linked in the PowerPoint. It's also on the project webpage. And that's open through the end of the year. In early twenty twenty-three, we'll be working with the board to go through the responses we got on that survey and develop a scope of work for Thurston twenty forty-five. And that scope of work will be formally adopted by the Board of County Commissioners through resolution. And twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five will really be the legwork for the Planning Commission and Board of County Commissioners, so know that this is coming your way. But I guess my small ask of the Planning Commission and the members that are listening online is be talking about this in your community, you know, let your let your colleagues know, let your friends know. We want to hear from as many people as possible. So I'll stop sharing, and if there's a brief moment for questions, I'm happy to answer, and you may have.
Yeah, thank you very much. Do you want to start? Yeah.
Am I? I think that's fine. Yeah. Thank you. I guess I have a. Put it down. I have a, I have a suggestion, I guess. I really appreciate what you said about doing outreach. And I looked at the survey, and I don't think the survey translates very well, I guess, for the outreach project you're trying to do. I think it would be helpful to maybe supplement that survey with an effort to ask those communities what they think would help with better engagement with the process. I'm a little concerned, I guess, to think that the survey is going to be the basis for the scope of work for our commission, because I think that, to me at least, looking at the survey, it's kind of a, you know, here's a list of elements, rank, you know, vote for which one you think is most important. And I don't know if that is open-ended enough. I think another way of asking questions is to sort of say, you know, what are you concerned about? What are your hopes? What are your concerns? What kind of opportunities would you like to see in the community? You know, open-ended questions like that. And I don't think that the survey really is an inviting way to try to answer questions like that. And also, you know, as you're doing your outreach, I think it's important to ask, you know, what kinds of, what modes of communication really work best for this community that you're trying to reach out to. And I know that other communities like King County or Seattle, they've even explored getting grants and paying people to be partners in a process who are more able to outreach to those communities. So I wonder, I don't know if it would be too late or not, but it might be worth trying to explore and seeing if if any grants might be available to actually actively bring organizations into the process of planning, like, you know, well, I don't know if C A Low comes to mind or whatever, but you know, you're going to get more engagement if people can afford to engage. So I think those are all things to think about. I know that there are great examples of this process that are further down the road within the Puget Sound area. I know that M R S C has a great page on how to do design for equity that you might want to look at and sort of follow the resources that it provides. But I think, I think that, I guess I just want to express that I don't think the survey is going to be sufficient for the planning commission's approach to the scope of work, I guess. And I'm really looking forward to hearing what you get out of your outreach efforts. And I hope we can find ways to supplement the survey with what you find through that.
Yeah. Thank you for that comment, Commissioner Wheatley. I will note that the survey we have now is pretty general. It kind of follows several elements throughout the comprehensive plan that are existing. But, but once we have the survey closed at the end of the year and we start those discussions with the Board of County Commissioners, as it kind of firms up what areas are prioritized, we plan on opening another survey, and that could be an opportunity to take more of those visionary questions on specific elements even. So we do intend to have another survey run probably next year, and that survey may do it throughout the life of the project. We haven't figured out the details of that, but this is not a one-and-done. It's just a starting point, so I appreciate that feedback.
Yeah, thank you, Michael. I had one comment that was similar to Helen's, thinking about community organizations. A lot of those are grant-funded nonprofits, and a lot of times they're working on restricted funding, so they might not even be able to make even staff time to help coordinate, or they'd have to steal it from other projects or from donor non-restricted funds. So that's just a thought. And then I was wondering, like, given that this is, of course, an overview, if you could maybe speak a little bit to what the role of the Planning Commission might be during the scoping phase?
Yeah, so at this point, I'd say just getting the community engaged and. And we did receive the comment that's, that was around, you know, reaching underrepresented groups. So what I'm hearing from the Planning Commission tonight is good feedback. As the board is considering this in the new year, you're welcome to tune in for those discussions and, you know, provide public comment to the Board of County Commissioners through their Tuesday meetings. But we don't have dates scheduled for that at this time. So I don't need anything from the Planning Commission at this point, and I can deliver an update after we've had conversations with the board or when those are scheduled, so the Planning Commission can opt in and listen.
So just to be clear, there's no substantive role for the Planning Commission during the scoping phase?
Not during the scoping phase. The scope is set by the County Commissioners.
Right, and Planning Commissions are supposed to be advisory to those types of decisions, if I'm correct?
Not necessarily to the docketting. So this particular project, we're scoping out the scope of work for the upcoming comprehensive plan update, which will be a docketed item. The Board of County Commissioners is the decision, are deciding word for that. The Planning Commission, this particular forum is providing perspective on our public participation plan and the participating in that survey and participating with the boards, comment periods are where the Planning Commission has a role at this point, as a commission or individuals have a, a role. As a planning commission as a whole, the planning commission will see the package as we bring those pieces forward and comment on how we actually create those goals or make those goals and policies within the comprehensive plan moving forward. But the scope of work itself is a board accounting mission item.
Right, there are lots of board accounting mission items that we provide input on as a planning mission. So I'm just, it doesn't feel like the planning commission not having, like, real substantive role until step three, several years down the road, doesn't feel like the right way to do this.
Noted, and let the board know that.
So I was kind of, hold on. And Derek was talking about, and I'm, I'm really having trouble with this scoping part, because this is our periodic comprehensive review, which means the entire comprehensive plan is open. And it's supposed to be open to us and the public to make whatever changes seem related or whatever we think is needed. And for, and I think we're going to have a real problem if the county commissioners say, you know, this is your scope of your work. Because I've been in these meetings, I've told people, you know, this isn't the time for what you're talking about. That's the, that's our periodic review when we open up the whole thing. When we're doing these annual things like Grand Mount, that's, they're, the, the county commissioners give us a scope, kind of give us some sideboards to work with. I don't think they do that on the comprehensive review. I think that's the time, because, to be honest, if that's the case, then I've been wasting a lot of time over a lot of years coming to these meetings, waiting for us to actually do a comprehensive plan review. Because you remember, twenty, when we did the last one, it was not opened up. It was, we're going to do it, we're going to do this stuff, and then the next time we do one, we're going to open it up. So to me, the comprehensive plan periodic review is a review of the document. And I will point out that Thurston County has already lost at least a growth management hearing board decision, and I think a court case on this by, in two thousand and four, saying, we're not putting, we're not, that's not going to be on our review of this comprehensive update. So that's something that needs to be thought about, too.
All right. Does anybody else have anything on this? We're going to be moving into our public hearing. Before we leave that, I just had one simple thing, and that was outside of what we do with joint planning on larger cities, is there, are you developing a plan in place on how to take input from some of the smaller areas like Tonino and Yelm and the tribes and what that is going to look like on this new comp plan?
Yeah, so some of the smaller cities will actually be included in this periodic update because we haven't gotten to those joint plans. So Tonino, Renear, and Yelm were actually working on currently, but Tonino and Renear primarily, and then also getting the code engaged. The tribes, as I mentioned during my presentation, I've always connected, I've already connected with them, and I've asked, you know, how would you prefer me to best keep, keep in touch with you? How do you want me to relay information to you? So I'm, you know, I'm letting them lead on what they need from me for engagement and keeping them updated.
Okay, thank you very much. Unless there's anything else, I think we're going to move on. We'll obviously be coming back to this issue a lot over the next few years. Oh. Please, please, Kevin.
Thank you, Chair Tassina. I agree with the previous two commissioners' concerns.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, with that, we're going to move on to our next agenda item, which is going to be the public hearing on the Grand Mount Subarea Plan. Today, we're stocking item number C P A seven A. This is a hybrid public hearing. Those wishing to testify have appeared in person or have joined by Zoom, phone, emailed in comment, or mailed in comment. If you wish to testify, for those in person, I have a sign-in sheet. And if you haven't signed in, I'll still come around and look for hands to make sure everybody gets a chance to talk. And then after that, we move on to our folks that want to testify by Zoom, and I'll give instructions at that time. Each person will have three minutes to testify. I'll be calling out names in order and then hands. When you hear your name, please come forward. Your time cannot be given to anybody else. And when testifying, please provide your name and address for the record. Polly will go over our rules for the timer, so everybody understands them. But basically, you're going to get three minutes.
This is our timer. It's, it was green during the first two and a half minutes. You'll turn the yellow at two twenty-three, and red at three, so you know you're out of time when it's red.
Yeah, so if you hit the three-minute mark, please wrap it up. I would prefer not to have to be the mean guy in the room. So with that, this public hearing is open, and we will start out with a staff presentation from Kate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. On the Grand Mount Subarea Plan, update to nineteen ninety-six plan, and also include site visit requests and changes to Thurston County Code. Staff has previously held two open houses in twenty eighteen and one in twenty twenty. We've had three work sessions with the Planning Commission this year, and we held an open house on November tenth last week in the Grand Mount community. We had about thirty attendees, and staff created informative poster boards with background information and answered questions, and there were posted note exercises with photographs and included with the public comment. And there were forms available for people to physically fill out, comment, and submit at the open house. There were extensive materials and notices in the open house, including a project webpage that has been continuously updated during the project review and contains all associated materials, presentations, meeting dates, and background information. There is a story map on the webpage, also referred to as the online open house, which breaks down drafts, what may be changing, and what kind of public input was being requested, which has been online since October. A notice for a special planning was done in case there were enough planning commissioners present to create a forum. Advertising was done on the building development centers, waiting for a meeting screen. A legal notice was published in the Olympia two weeks prior, and a press release was published a week prior. There was also an email update to those on general planning projects application list and those on a Grand Mount specific subscribe list, which has over one hundred and sixty contacts signed up. And there was also a postcard sent out to property owners with five hundred feet of each individual property that had a proposal for a rezon, asking for input and explaining the process in some of the upcoming meetings. We have received almost thirty comments. The public comment period initially closed at four p.m. today, but comment is collected up until the public hearing. There were some general themes, concerns with addressing agricultural needs and environmental protection, interest in parks and trails, some concern with the reset requests and traffic concerns, among others. There were additional comments from the applicants for the reset requests, some restating their intentions, and some, like, for the Black Lake Quarry property that provided additional information and suggestions for their proposals. There were comments from other jurisdictions, including the Chehalis tribe, who reiterated that the tribe is not subject to county zoning, and that the proposal does not affect their property usage, and from Washington State Department of Transportation, who provided comment on the effect of expanding U G A on traffic. And they requested an update to the Transportation Chapter and potential traffic studies if there is an expansion to U G A. There were some additional comment received from planning and public work staff, including input on providing additional information on the local environment within the subarea plan, and then some inputs from public works on the sign guidelines, specifically making references consistent to the appropriate documents and other standards, like stormwater and road standards. And then after this public hearing, we will have a work session where we can discuss the project, and you can ask questions and request changes. And at the next work session, we'll bring back changes to the drafts that reflect some of these concerns and changes that the Planning Commission requests along with a staff report with more information.
All right, thank you very much. With that, we'll start with public testimony. First up would be Mr. John Peters.
All right, my name's John Peters. Address twenty-eight forty Black Lake Boulevard, Southwest, Suite C, Tommater, Washington, nine eight five one two. My name is John. I'm a professional engineer with a master's in environmental engineering. I work for it, am part owner in Black Lake Quarry. And my comments today, I'd like to focus specifically on the Quarry property, which is included in this proposed plan at the intersection one ninety-sixth and Sergeant Road. We've got an eighty-acre sand and gravel operation there. And what I'd like to highlight is that the proposed, this is a very unique opportunity where the proposed use in this, this update would be to change this industrial gravel operation. It would be to, to change the zoning to light industrial, which actually provides a couple, couple different opportunities for environmental benefit. So this is a unique one where it's a, it's a heavy use right now. We're open to the zoning change to light industrial, which would, which would provide two, two main things. One, being a reduction in the pressure for additional light industrial lands in larger or in other type of land use situations that have higher environmental values, such as, you know, agricultural or large lot residential, things like that. Use this eighty-acre site that's currently a gravel operation permitted to mine a hundred feet under the high groundwater table over an eighty-acre site and essentially create another, another pit lake in the industrial area there to, at this critical time. So that's the other piece. It's a critical time right now. We are just now mining below the groundwater table. So there's an opportunity here to realize a higher and better use for the site. The other piece there is there's been a lot of concern over the aquifer, the sensitive, sensitive aquifer and groundwater zone that we're in. The, by changing, by looking at an alternative use, it would actually be an improvement to what, what the, the mining at the end of, end of mining lifecycle would end up looking like. So while groundwater is, is protected through a monitoring protection plan, groundwater monitoring plan during mining, post-mining, the, you, you end up with a surface water body that is hydrologically connected with your groundwater system, and there's a potential contaminant pathway beyond the quarry's operations. And so I just wanted to highlight the unique opportunity that you all have to make a recommendation to utilize this site for multiple benefits in a win-win scenario. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Carolyn with Womoski.
Yes, I'm Carolyn Womoski. My address is two nine zero zero Foreign Road in Centroya. I'm here representing our property that's been in our business, in our family for over fifty years, and we've been waiting twenty years to have some zoning changed. So anyway, the address is sixty-seven eleven, one hundred and ninety-eight Southwest Rochester.
Thank you. Todd, did you want to speak today?
I'm Todd. Hey, did you want to speak to you? Thank you.
I'm Todd Womoski, and Carolyn's my mom. I'm, uh, my address, twenty-one oh three Harrison Avenue Northwest, Suite twenty-four thirty-two Olympia, Washington, nine eight five oh two. I'm a state-certified real estate appraiser and a building contractor, and we've been planning and hoping to move this property that my mother just mentioned into the U G A. We're contiguous to the U G A right now, and I've been asked to speak about demand right now in the Grand Mount area. And so it's been my observation that the, the Grand Mount market area for single-family residential homes from twelve hundred to nineteen hundred square feet, new construction primarily, has changed and moved. I spoke here about three years ago, prior to the pandemic, and I was talking about a line at Ninety-third Avenue would be the northern border, and that things changed quite, quite a bit from Ninety-third North. That, that line is now down to the Maytown exit is the northern border of that Grand Mount area. And the east and west is, is also quite remarkable, where Oakville has become part of our Grand Mount market. It competes well with, with single families in the, in the size and scope of home that I described, also out to Tonino, and then down across the county line into Lewis County, through Harrison, most all the way down to the north part of Centroya, has all become part of the same market area. And you could have that happen where different counties are all in one market area when you're, they're connected and contiguous like that. I, I did some research earlier today and heard what was going on in Grand Mount, and I have handouts that I'll, I'll give to the lady over there that you guys can look at if you'd like. And I've highlighted, but the average sale price of these type of homes, or list price, actually, I should say, is four hundred eleven thousand dollars. And the sales, the marketing time is thirty days, days on market. That's from when it gets listed to having to sign around purchase and sale agreement, only thirty days, which is remarkable considering what our economy's gone through. Interest rates now at seven percent, they've doubled since March, and there's still quite a vigorous demand for single-family residences in this area. In addition, the, the listings are also, you know, we have a couple more listings than normal. Six months ago, I'd see two or three listings in this market area and maybe a seven to ten day, uh, marketing time. And now where there are six listings, and it is, the average marketing time is thirty-six days as far as listings. And so we find that the pandemic changed a lot of things. For instance, many people can work from home now. And so people that live in Grand Mount may have a job at Boeing and Renton, but they work there. Oh, I haven't, okay. I just wanted to indicate that I, I think that the market's alive and well in, in Grand Mount, and that there's great demand for single-family housing there.
Great, thank you very much. So anybody else in the boardroom that would like to address the planning commission? Mr. Deskins?
My name is Ryan Deskins. I live at one nine three three one Old Highway ninety-nine Southwest, Grand Mount, Washington. Our, our address is actually Rochester, but we are a community. Grand Mount is a community and has community things. We had the, the, the open house the other night. Probably that weren't able there. We had a good number of the planning commissioners showed up. I appreciate you guys coming down and taking the time and, and really listening to the issues. One of the things that surprised me was that a lot of people don't think that Grand Mount is a community. And, and boy, it sure feels like a community, and I have a business there. We live there. We work there. We have fellow workers here. People are doing business, trading goods, lots of activity, lots of growth. And I was really surprised when some of the people that showed up said, Grand Mount's on a community, you know? And I was really surprised when some of the people that showed up said Grand Mounds on a community, you know, and we moved out here so it wouldn't change. And, and I understand that change is hard and I actually, I have a new appreciation for what you guys do on the planning commission. Holy crap, is that a tough job? Who signs up for that murderous task? So thank you for doing it because we're not, you don't have to. But people don't always like change. And the truth of the matter is, is Grand Mound is growing. There is demand and there is more coming. And we can stick our head in the sands and act like it's not, but it's there. And we have real issues that haven't been addressed and have been just pushed down the street, pushed down the street. Like these folks have been waiting 20 years. There's lots of those stories, right? But those real issues are becoming very apparent. The cracks are starting to show, right? And it, and it goes from our schools to our roads, to our services because of our tax base. And a commissioner report was done a long time ago. I don't remember 1998, six. And it said that Grand Mound needed more stickiness, needed more places of people went there and they stayed there and they worked there, right? But right now Grand Mound's kind of a bedroom community. The only jobs in Grand Mound are, we'll call them entry level, you know, service jobs. Not that they're bad, but we need real jobs and we need real industry and we need a real town. And I think this UGA expansion is much, much needed. And I think, I think, you know, some people think it's way too much. I'm thinking, holy cow, this is way too small. We, the last one we got was 20 years ago. And I, I think you're going to see, the reason that Todd mentioned that the, the housing is such a high demand is because they're being pushed out. And we have in America right now called the great reshuffle. I don't know if you even know what that is, but people are moving out of confined areas and moving to the, to the more rural areas. And I met several people out there and they said they specifically moved down to Grand Mound to get out, but yet they could commute back to a city center, right? And they didn't want to see Grand Mound turn into the city center. And I understand that, but the truth of the matter is we're right on I-5 at an intersection of major highways. And it's coming. So the planning commission's got a tough job, but our job is to look forward. Our job is to look forward. What do we want our community to look like? Right? And we can't look back. We have to, we have to look forward. I am, I'm, I'm hoping that we see the light and that we know that we got to do something. We got to take a change. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else in the board? Please sir, come up and identify yourself and give us an idea where you live and yeah.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Joshua Daley. That's my wife Cheryl. We live at 4917 193rd Lane, right next to where the Deskin property is at. And I want to refute some of those comments. So first I want to thank the committee for taking the time to, well, talk to us, right? I mean, this is how democracy works. I'm concerned about the urban growth area change and predominantly the amount of industrial zoning changes, right? I don't know if you've seen the west side of, of I-5 is a mess. It's an absolute traffic mess. And now we're proposing to make the east side of I-5 a traffic mess. Now, growth may be inevitable, but I would argue that growth should be managed and we should determine what kind of, kind of community we want. Now, I, I worked on the onsite septic committee in 2014 and I know the scattered creek is an exceptionally vulnerable aquifer that serves over 18,000 residents, right? The property that the Deskins are talking about that they recently purchased, about 70 so acres, it's right at the end of that aquifer. My property's 40% wetlands and it gets two feet of water every winter. So I get lakefront property, you know, six months out there. However, all that water's got to go somewhere. And when you put trucks and you put diesel and you put transmission fluid, they break, they spray. I was a maintenance officer in the army. They break and that place and that stuff goes somewhere and it goes in the aquifer. So a couple of things I'd like to refute for that proposal, we have, have an increase in truck traffic along Old Highway 99. However, it's not all time. It's, you know, during the day, usually in the mornings and the evenings. But if we put some industrial areas out there on the east side and Amazon or Costco decides to build there, I can guarantee you we'll have traffic, noise and light pollution 24 hours a day. So we talk about growth. Well, I don't want that growth to impact my property values, my quality of life. Two tours in Iraq, I'm trying to get away from noise, not promote it and make it. Noise moves northwest to southwest in the area, right up that valley, right? I get the smell of the marijuana farm about five days a week. And I get all the noise and light pollution coming right up that valley. All that water goes down south, right? And that comes all the way from Tenino and Yelm and works its way down. So whatever has to be put down there is going to have to be managed with sewer. If we do sewer, we're going to increase the cost of every resident down there. When we last talked about it, they wanted to move the, the cutoff line from 100 feet to 500 feet. That's substantial at $10,000 per 100 feet of sewer line. That is in $2,014. That's, that will wreck households if you do that. So looking at the septic management plan, it requires the county to look at and deal with the department of health and what the impacts of scattered creek are going to be. They want to turn that into a sensitive area. They're monitoring it now and they're very concerned. And specifically further urban growth areas and expansion of existing facilities must take into account what is known about the aquifer vulnerability and geology. The health department should also provide comment to, to pressure alternative sewage disposal methods. I cannot see in any way, shape or form, we're moving in light industrial out to the east side in that sector is going to be good for the environment and meet, while it may meet the growth needs, it will not meet the environmental protection needs as list laid out by the RCW. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there somebody else here in the boardroom that'd like to address the planning commission? All right. We'll move to online and I'm having a hard time reading this. Would you mind calling them out?
Yes, we have Lisa Reiner.
Lisa, you're up. You'll have to unmute yourself.
Yes, I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
You can. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I thank you for having this discussion, Lisa Reiner. I've lived in Thurston County for over 40 years, 2103 Harrison Avenue Northwest, number two dash 12. I do not support this UGA expansion. Let's be frank, what we're seeing here is they're proposing to have 200,000 square foot warehouses being built on this farmland. And this farmland is crucial to the survival of Thurston County long-term. We all need to eat. In the past, we've had meeting after meeting with the planning commission to preserve farmland. We have a young crop of farmers out there trying to do their thing. We're hoping to get more. And so the issue is preserving farmland. Yes, I understand that corporations like Amazon want to move into this UGA. Yes, I understand that Panatoni wants to move in, into this UGA. Let's face it, there is, there are areas for Panatoni and Amazon to have their 200 square, 200,000 square foot buildings put in Lacey area or other places along the I-5 corridor. But no, they want you, the planning commission to rezone this farmland so they can put their 200,000 square foot buildings on this farmland. And so scattered creek is very, very important. The water table is very, very important. Stormwater issues, contaminating the aquifer. How are these huge buildings going to deal with stormwater? Are they going to inject the stormwater into the aquifer? I think they are. And then how is that going to affect the aquifer for years and years to come? For people who need to drink this water for years to come, I think it's going to be a huge issue. And so low income housing in Rochester has, there is a lot of low income housing for Rochester. A lot of people of color live down there, a lot of Hispanic families who do a lot of the farm work live down there. They will be impacted by this UGA turnover. And so we've got to look at the rural nature of these, these areas. Many people in the rural areas want to keep it rural. And so of course the TRPC talked about the buildable lands report. And they also talked about housing. We must preserve the low income housing that we currently have in this area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Reiner.
Janice Arnold.
Mr. Arnold, you're up. You'll have to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me? Sorry, I am zooming in from the other side of the globe in the middle of the night. So my apologies. Can you hear me? Okay?
We can. Thank you.
Okay, great. I'm an adjacent property owner. My husband and I own the Grand Mound School recently redesignated as a historic site. And we submitted a letter, but I have some additional comments I'd like to add. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge the Chehalis Nation people as the traditional owners and stewards of this land. Stan and I offer our respect to the elders, past, present, and through them to all of the indigenous people, the Pacific Northwest tribes. There's a couple of issues that we brought up in one of the open houses. And I want to just address the fact that our property, which is west of Highway 99 and north of Grand Mound Way, has a zoning error on the postcard that was sent out. It shows us as, we are zoned and have been zoned residential since we purchased the property 30 years ago. So we're hoping that that can be changed so it doesn't mislead the public into thinking that we're commercial property. Secondly, in reviewing the steel hammer application, I have to point out that it is incomplete and inaccurate. So on page three of their application, and there are answers that page is just blank. The, the answers are not answered and those are where the address, the proposed changes and how that would affect the community, the goals, how it meets the goals of the Washington State Growth Management Act and how it meets the goals of the Thurston County Comprehensive Planning Goals. And those are things like open space, environment and historic preservation. The part that is incorrect is item D, page two, when it asks, why is this zoning change needed? And they answer, most of the AC land has been developed. And this is clearly, they have not looked at that, that area where they're requesting that rezoned because there's a lot of property that is still undeveloped. So it seems premature to me to be considering this application until it is accurate. As far as the zoning goes for our land, I know it, we've spoken with the county. We have spoken at the open house and we're told that it's not a big deal. But when you've owned property for 30 years as a residence and it's used as a residence, it seems to me that that should be accurately annotated on the zoning application or zoning maps so that the rest of the public who are judging this development might be able to, to look at the big picture accurately. Sorry, I'm talking really fast to keep within my three minutes. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much.
There's a phone number. I can't read it. It ends in 422. So if I stay allowed to talk.
Right. Someone calling in on 422. You're up. Please identify yourself. Let us know what part of the county you live in.
Yes, sir. Can you hear me? Hello. Yes, I'm a resident in the city of Olympia. My name is John Newman. I live at 1902 Burbank Avenue Northwest, Olympia 98502, and I have lived in the area since 1986 and worked and watched zoning changes throughout the county. My concerns are with the residents that have mentioned problems with the changes in the urban growth area boundary for Grand Mound. As the last speaker mentioned, there is ample space for building many residences as well as commercial opportunities. I feel that the urban growth proposal is representative of just a few landowners and not the majority of the citizens of the area. I also am concerned that if the, any expansion of the urban growth area will result in pressure on the county to improve roads and utility services that will not be covered by increases in property taxes to anything that's being built. Property sales in Thurston County right now are 40% lower than a year ago. I find it surprising that you could build and sell a house in 30 days. I also want to refer a comment to a letter submitted from the Washington State Department of Transportation that says, quote, "Available market-based evidence does not support a need for expanding the Grand Mound urban growth area." So again, I think that it should not be approved and that more, maybe in the future with some better analysis and information can be appraised. Thank you.
Thank you very much. L. James. L. James, you'll have to unmute yourself to testify.
Hi, can you hear me?
You can. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. I'm Lorraine James. I live at A210 James Road Southwest in Rochester. And I would like to say that I do not support any changes to this, the, the growth area, particularly for the rural resource industrial area. Any land in Thurston County that already has designation to be industrial needs to be used first before any consideration is given to changing the zoning. I don't think that there's any reason to come down here and start developing, doing things like we're seeing between Reynolds Road in Centaria and the Thurston County line. And you look at the behemoth warehouses that are going on around 93rd Avenue. And it just frightens me that this is where some people would like to head, but I don't think our general, most citizens around here, community members do not want to see this. We do not need to become federal way. I mean, what we have now, we've become fast food and gas stations. We're kind of a little stop along the way. And I think we need to maintain this as our rural community that I don't see much addressed to preserving farmland, critical habitat. And as many people have mentioned before, our aquifer. And when you pave it over, when it's gone, it's gone. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mike Parsons.
Mike Parsons, you're up next. Mike, you'll have to unmute yourself. Mike, you'll have to unmute yourself if you'd like. There you go.
How's that? Thank you. I'm going to get my photo up here as well. Thank you, first of all, for the opportunity to speak, planning commission commissioners and staff. They've done a great job. I've been tracking and watching some of the hearings. I've been a resident of Thurston County. My address is 7727 Cooper Point Road Northwest, Olympia 98502. I've been a resident of Thurston County for 60 years. I'm a third generation. I'm the owner of Black Lake Quarry and which consists of three different locations in Thurston County. You had a speaker earlier, John Peters. He spoke, the engineer, he's my son-in-law and he also works for the company. Our request is, is started as an internal discussion we had with the family on, which we do on all of our properties, is to decide, where do we go from here? We have currently 78 acres permitted mine. John explained to you the depths and the, and the different things that we're permitted to do and, and how we do it. This property is unique to the fact that it, it's part of, it's in the UGA, part of it's not in the UGA. Part of it's light industrial, part of it's real residential, five acres. The property has been The property has been used as a mine for over 35 years. And all the other mines that you have in the, in the area, there are also industrial zones, lakeside miles, those, they're all industrially zoned properties. We need to be industrially zoned as well. Even, you know, since we're in the same, same type of business. We feel that if we stop mining now, we still have an opportunity to, to do something good with the, with the real estate and the land, to, to create additional jobs for the, for the community of Grand Mound. 200 to 250 jobs could be created. We can run that pit right now with three employees over the next, for 35 more years. And that's what it'll take and it'll end up to be a, a man-made lake that is not open to the public. I think John mentioned that. We currently have our own water rights. We, we use our own water. If we were to hook up to, to water, we would create a great amount of money in impact fees to the, to the water district. Back in 1978, when they originally did the Rochester Subarea Plan, which included Grand Mound, this was identified as a growth center, the Grand Mound Rochester area, to promote growth and economic development. That's what we, we see as, as a good alternative to what we're doing with our property. We did send an updated letter to talk about UGA and not going through the UGA path. And we hope you read that clearly and support our request. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Sue Danver. Ms. Danver, you'll have to unmute yourself.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes.
Um, yes, I'm Sue Danver. I live at 7106 Foot Hill Loop Southwest, near the Delphi Valley. Tonight, I'm representing Black Hills Audubon Society. So our concern tonight is the request by Black Lake Resources to allow its property in Grand Mound to become part of the Grand Mound urban growth area and to allow industrial zoning warehousing on a portion of this property. We ask the planning committee to delay voting on whether to recommend or not this proposal until county staff can research some pressing questions about the impact of warehousing on the hydrogeology and hydrology of the area. Water quality and quantity issues in South Thurston County are quite complex and should be researched by the county's hydrogeologist. In our written comment, I go into some of the water issues, but I have secondary issues. Regardless of the outcome of the water research, there are other serious issues regarding warehousing. One, the BOCC has recently contracted for a study on whether rural Thurston County needs more land zone for industrial activity. The results of that study should, should guide any decision about creating more industrial land in the county, including the Grand Mound area. Two, changing this permitted gravel mine to allow warehousing would, might set a precedent to permit warehouses, warehouses at any gravel mine in the rest of Thurston County. This would be not good. In 2021, the county updated its comp plan mining policy and code. Allowing warehouses on gravel properties was not even proposed, let alone recommended in that many-year-long stakeholder effort. In addition, the BOCC chose not to include in the current comp plan document a request to allow warehousing on a permitted mine site. This Grand Mound request looks like a backdoored effort to allow warehouses on any permitted gravel mine in Thurston County. The Black Lake Resources proposal should be denied at this time until the planning commission can learn more about the area's hydrogeology and the results of the industrial lands review has been published. Even with all this information at hand, the planning commission and board of county commissioners should consider the precedent that approving this request would set for the entire county. Our rural lands and conservation lands are special and precious, precious and deserve protection. Thank you so much. Good luck.
Thank you very much. If there's anybody else online that'd like to testify, you'll have to raise your hand. But if not, I'd like to come back to the boardroom and invite anybody else that might want to speak in person, if there's anybody here. Please, sir.
Good evening. Thank you commissioners for the opportunity to speak. My name is David Toyer. With Toyer Strategic Advisors, you've seen a few pieces of correspondence from me regarding Grad Mound and many of them to do with the Black Lake Quarry request. Wanted to kind of point out and maybe cover a couple of things tonight, starting with the general broad picture and then getting a little more specific to the Black Lake Quarry request. First of all, you're in a planning process right now that, as many of the folks testified here tonight, you haven't looked at the Grand Mound Subarea Plan in almost 20 years. And it's an opportunity right now to not just look at the history of the area, but look at the future of the area. And one of those things that I think you're hearing from a lot of the folks that have various proposals in is that this is an area that has an opportunity for economic development. And I think we need to understand what that means. You have residential population allocation there, you have a jobs allocation there. Those don't necessarily match up in a sustainable way. I'll give you an example. If you look at the Billable Lands Report, there's 400 dwelling units that it says would be in Grand Mound, put in Grand Mound between 2020 and 2040. Typically, on an economic development basis, you'd look at 1.7 jobs per residence as a real sustainable number because that gives people opportunity to work close to where they live. And right now, your plan for down there only has 190 jobs that are going to kind of commercial and mixed use, which a lot of that is service industry jobs, 92 industrial and 30 to other. It doesn't come anywhere close to that 1.7 to 1 ratio. You would need 680 jobs to have an appropriate ratio economic development-wise in that area to provide some sustainability, in our opinion. That sustainability is not just jobs. When you think about it, that is folks that can reduce their vehicle miles traveled because they work closer to home. That is increases to the property valuations down there in Grand Mound, which benefits the school districts, the fire district and other services in that area. And I think that's important to point out. Specific to the Black Lake Quarry request, you saw, we submitted a revision to their request, providing an alternative to UGA expansion, which would be to rezone this rural resource industrial. Rural resource industrial is a zone that's used for gravel mines quite commonly throughout the county. It's not a stretch to say that that would be applicable in this particular scenario. But it would provide Black Lake Resources the opportunity in the future, as, as Mike Parsons mentioned, to look at how they might transition from a gravel mine to something else that could be of better economic value to that community and area. And also at rural resource industrial, provide some better transitional, transition between the urban growth area and, and those that are outside the urban growth area. And I think the important point that Mike pointed out, my last point, is that this property is currently split by the UGA. So a good portion of it is in the UGA and some of it is outside the UGA. So thank you very much for the opportunity to speak and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Toyer. Is there anybody else in here? Please, Ms. White.
Good evening, Commissioners. Kristy White. I live in the Delphi Valley. I have not, I don't live in Grand Mound. I did work down in that area for some time. But what I'm hearing from everybody speaking this evening is I'd like to reiterate, and again, going back to what Maya presented earlier, this evening was about engagement. And that I think there's a lot more research that I know it's, it's a heavy burden for all of you to look at, but to really balance what people are asking for as well as the businesses. I commute over 60 miles a day back and forth to work now. But I do that because it's my choice. I don't expect that where I live, that employment should come to me. I choose to live in a specific spot and then I travel to work. That's my choice. So that's just one thing I want to remind people about. Understanding that, yes, it would be nice if there was, you know, an employer right next door to where I live. But that would really change the quality of my life too. So I'm hopeful, again, encouraging all of you to find that middle ground and do that research and dare I say stakeholder group. But that might be something to, to consider to see if there's some, some options that can meet the needs of business. But also really take a good look at what rural residents as living in the Delphi Valley, District Three. I'm a rural girl, so, but anyway, that's just my two cents for this evening.
Thank you very much. How about anybody else here in the boardroom? Please.
I'm Ywatt, and I've lived in Rochester for 20 years. And I've worked as an occupational therapist for the school district for 20 years. And the kind of growth that we've been locked into in that area, I feel like is, is conformed our, we talk about economic growth, but we are stuck in the low income scenario for our, and it impacts our kids, it impacts our education, it impacts their opportunities. Because the industry, it is growing, but it's low, it's low position jobs. And they don't offer the quality and the kinds of resources we need for our families that do live rural. We need a piece of that too. And so this unimbalance piece where we only develop fast food and small, small businesses that don't allow us anything but minimum wage, which by the way, after January 1st is going to price people out of federal assistance. So people who in our schools that rely on, you know, rely on the food assistance and home assistance for, for living, all of that's going to be up in the air. So they're going to have to work less. We need more industry that, that provides us with a tax base for our community, not just to be low income, but to have a choice in what kind of community we are. I'm a rural girl too. I've grown up rural. I have, I grew up on the farm. I fish remote in Alaska. And I, I don't know how much more rural it gets than that, but I also recognize the need for balance and economic growth. And I like what I heard from the quarry tonight in terms of having that perspective. They're thinking about our community and the, and the value in our community, and I think we need to.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else in here that would, I just, just to remind everybody that after this hearing closes, the next opportunity for the public to comment would be directly to the board accounting commissioner. So if you want to have any comment that the planning commission hears first, this is really the last opportunity for it. All the comment that happens after this hearing will be forwarded to the board. So it's kind of last call. Yeah. All right. Well, thank you, everybody, for coming into this. Hearing is now closed and we're going to move on to the work session portion this evening. I guess we will go back over to.
Hey, sure. I'll just reiterate what I said previously that at this time, this work session is meant to discuss the project and ask questions and request any changes that you would like to see in the next drafts that I will be bringing back in the next work session. Like I mentioned before, those drafts will reflect some of the concerns and changes that we have heard so far, like what I mentioned about comments from the staff and planning staff on adding information to the design guidelines. Most likely, some suggestions for policy changes for agriculture and environmental concerns that we've heard so far. So at this time, I would like to hear from you.
Do you want to, do you want us to break these up, like first the core of it, which would be, you know, the big packet, and then talk about each, and then we'll go through one by one on the eight individual amendments would be best?
That would be helpful for us.
Okay. Do you have a preference on how we start, what area we start this on?
We want to start with the goals and policies.
Goals and policies? All right. I guess we're going to start with goals and policies. Oh, Kevin, please.
Sorry, Chair. You, you moved through that transition pretty quickly. I, I had a question and I'm not sure whether I just missed my chance or right now would be the perfect timing. But it had to do with some of the public comment for that hearing. I, I'm just looking real quickly at the written comment summary that we received and then the following attached comments. And I'm concerned that the summary of where it says highlighted topics does not really adequately reflect what the commenter was stating. I'll just give two quick examples that are concerned. Unique ID number six, Amy Loudermilk, who is usually a representative of the Chehalis Tribe related to planning stuff. It says, "The highlighted topics discusses county zoning maps not showing Chehalis Tribe's lands." However, when you read the submitted written note that Amy Loudermilk provided, she specifically is saying, "It does not disclose that the tribe is not under county zoning requirements." It's autonomous. That's the main point of that comment. The other one is ID number 12 from Neil Turner. And it says, "Discussing, discusses expanding water protection and employment in Grand Mound." That makes it sound like expanding employment is what he's discussing. But in only using a couple more words, he very clearly states, "We need good full-time employment, not part-time shift work," which is a very different kind of notion there than what's expressed. So there's multiple of these that are like this, and I'm just concerned that these highlighted topics could better represent what the, what is stated.
Thank you, Commissioner Pastner. Not, not to belabor quite too much, but one of my questions was also on, on Unique ID six from Ms. Loudermilk. And I wanted to know, was that the only comment we've gotten from the tribe? Is that the only official comment that we've gotten from the tribe?
That is the only official comment that we've gotten from the tribe. I have had other communication just over the phone. Main intention of that comment was just to, just to reiterate that they have their own zoning map, they have their own intentions for the property that they own. If we prezone their property, it does not legally affect them. It reflects our zoning map. What is most likely going to be their future, even if we don't permit it? I know that they have looked and are looking at whether or not they want to provide additional information on the other properties and the rest of the subarea plan, but at this time, they have not provided an official comment.
I, I guess the direction would be, you know, we do have some side rails. Do our side light rails include not considering what the tribe plans to do?
It, it's, I mean, that's why we have an application, an application that we have provided. It is technically a county application to change the zone of the property to reflect what they are planning for it. I did talk to them about whether or not they wanted to consider other properties or if they wanted a note of some kind. But really, the reality is that their properties change hands so quickly, they move into trust so quickly that we wouldn't be able to keep up with their zoning map. We wouldn't be able to plan for that. So they didn't have any additions to make at the moment. I also just want to make a quick note to Commissioner Pastner's comment. Just, just in general, the summary is, is really just a reference. It's just to, just something quickly that we put together so that we can keep track of the comments. It's not meant to replace any of the comments. So do not take summarized sections of that table as what that comment is.
Fair. All right, okay. So we'll move into the goals and policies section of this document if anybody wants to have discussion on that. have discussion on that. Please. Thank you.
That's the heart of it. Well, just in terms of the design of this plan, this draft plan. Frankly, I find it confusing, the goals and actions section. It would be really helpful, I think, for me and for the public, if the goals and actions were linked to the elements. Like, you know, land use, then multi-transportation. But then it kind of it it's hard to follow sometimes how the discussion in the elements section, or whatever you want to call it, the chapters, then follows through to goals and actions. I don't know if it would make sense to put, put the goals and actions after the land, after each element, or to just make sure that you title the goals and actions according to the elements or something like that, but right now, the the kind of list of things like create bicycle routes, you know, where where does that fit? You know, so there's just kind of some confusion about the relationship between the elements and the goals and actions. So that's, that's just kind of a maybe a design issue. But more key for me, I guess, is the things that aren't there, like you know, I've I've mentioned this from the very beginning, I don't understand, and we've had discussion about this tonight about housing. You know, HB twenty twenty-two now requires a discussion of affordability, it requires a housing needs assessment. And, you know, we're expecting, you know, according to this, the population of Grand Mound will more than double. And yet, there's no real discussion of what that means in terms of what the housing demand is going to be. We we had some very heartfelt discussion about how hard it is to afford to live now and how hard it's going to become for a lot of people who live in the area. How do, how does this plan address that? You know, if we're talking about intensifying, increasing population, how are people who aren't the ones who are buying those new single-family homes going to live there? It it's, I believe that's kind of now a requirement in comprehensive planning to provide some discussion about that and even if it's not, I think in the case of Grand Mound, it's a really important question, because we're talking about people who live in what used to be an affordable place and what's, which is quickly becoming unaffordable. And that is a really key issue, and it's a key issue for all planning. I'm I'm on the TRPC and I I attend growth management for meetings for Puget Sound region. And they just did a survey of statewide, the Department of Commerce and the Puget Sound Regional Council. And housing affordability and homelessness homelessness are far and away the top issues, top planning issues that people have right now, beyond transportation or anything else. So I think it's a really key issue, and I don't feel like it's really been addressed here. And we've been talking a lot about the zoning of it, right? Like, where should those houses go? And that's so important for thinking about some of these property change requests, these amendments, so you know, I'll come, yes, come back to me, but I really, really want to register that, so really key issue. And then after my turn comes around again, if it does, I have other things.
Okay, so I heard that one suggestion is to goals and actions from the end of the summer plan to each individual chapter.
Or at least relate, clearly relate them, clearly relate the goals and actions to where they fit into the chapters and the discussions around the chapters, because otherwise they're just kind of floating out there and not necessarily well connected.
Like the red header on above each one?
Yeah.
I I guess I'm not.
Well, I mean, there's not always discussion of the things that wind up in goals and actions. It's not always what's discussed clearly in the chapters.
Okay, so this is not just a formatting issue, this is, the goals and actions are not comprehensive. As comprehensive as you'd like.
Yeah, or it just, yeah, it needs to be better explained how they're carrying out the issues of.
That's a difficult one to.
Yeah, well, yeah, I don't want to spend too much time on that, but yeah.
Yeah, I think that goals and actions generally are moderately vague.
Yeah, well, I I don't want to spend too much on, you know, this is not a really key issue here. I think what's really, really important is stuff like, do we have adequate information about housing and affordability? Do we have adequate information about what's the future of stormwater planning? I don't think we do in here. Anyway.
Right, well, does anybody else have something on the goals and actions portion of this that they would like to discuss?
I I saw the letter from the DOT and I'm just kind of wondering how that's been addressed, their concerns.
I think, I, well, I know, I will be providing more information in my staff report, how their concerns may impact the individual properties. It may be that during the super process, we're doing environmental review, we may want to consider looking more into the impact of traffic. We may need to talk internally about what our process would be if we weren't to go back and update the transportation chapter based on whether or not we were proposing that we expand the UGA. I do think we should talk about that a little bit more internally, but yeah, see, but it's probably one of those things.
Also, also I I, you know, I I'm, I'm a rough guy. But I'm concerned, how do what we do here eventually has to get approved by the state, is that correct? No.
What we do here has to eventually be approved by the board of county commissioners. But the state does not have an approval process for our comprehensive game, whatever. What we do is submit a notice of adoption to the state for them to comment on, and that's a period of time, sixty days before the board makes their final action, so that they can provide any final comments. If we're way off base or we should consider something else, and then we do notice them when we adopt, but there is no formal.
Just to piggyback on on Jim's question, so the the bar that is set for expanding UGA is pretty high. We have to have pretty good justification for expanding that.
Absolutely.
Who is the keeper of the bar? Who decides if the justification is good enough or not?
So, well, to begin, that will be planning commission and then there's the UGM, which is the ring from management. It's a coalition of cities, go ahead, Kate. Yes, that we can't, we call it UGM, because never remember all of the words to it, but it's a coalition that starts with TRPC, they put this together with the cities and several stakeholders to talk about, is it prudent, are we needing goals and policies in the county, why? Goals and policies to actually recommend, there is a recommendation as well to expand the growth area. Both of those recommendations will then go with the board of county commissioners who make final action. Final decision is advised with them.
And the only recourse to that would be a lawsuit.
A challenge to the growth management hearing for.
This is not uncommon.
No worries.
In terms of the timeline, I think it's important to note that the TR, this, this wouldn't happen if it went to the TRPC. It wouldn't happen until next year. So, you know, this is at least, I mean, with that measure, we know that this is at least a year down the road, even to just decide if the UGA can be expanded or not.
Well, next year, as in they're putting the, they're preparing the committee for January, February, so early next year. If if a decision is made.
So I I also recall that as of right now from the twenty-year plan, that from the TRPC, that there's adequate land and everything for housing right now to to handle growth. That's how many growth.
Essentially, yes.
Twenty-two percent access.
Yeah, so I guess that kind of goes along. So does that justify an expansion of the, of the UGA then?
Not to use the billable lands report as a reason. The main, you know, point that you have to make is does the property provide an overriding public benefit to the area outside of that individual property? And so referencing that report would not make sense in this situation, because it does not state a need. If there was a different public benefit that you could quote, then that could justify an expansion. But we haven't discussed one at this time.
I don't want to get too deep in the woods, because that's going to get very project-specific or proposal-specific. We're not going to do the proposal-specific stuff, just shepherding, trying to do the big picture stuff just right yet. It's a good question, but I don't want to, the other way, next thing you know, we'll be talking about these very specific projects, over a period, talk about very specific projects. But go ahead.
Well, I I have to disagree with your interpretation, Chair, because I think there's a reason why we look at these requests all at the same time, once a year, or however often we do. And it was stated by Maya Tippel earlier, we're supposed to look cumulatively. We are supposed to look at the big question, we're supposed to ask the big question. Does the UGA need to be expanded? It's not just a piece-by-piece question, it's a larger question as well. We're supposed to look at the cumulative impacts of these proposed expansions and ask the that big question.
All right.
And if I may just really quickly, you know, just to go back to the earlier I didn't want, I really, really didn't want to get stuck on on the design of the thing, because I really wanted to make a clear question, are we going to get any kinds of housing needs assessment on this? On the, on this draft plan? Are we going to get any kind of housing needs assessment, other than just the billable lands report? That's a question that I have.
And we don't have plans to do any additional analysis. I think there is potential to potentially draft some additional information based on what the American information we already have. Maybe there's something that we could get through geodata or through TRPC, what kind of information they use to create the report. There's a chance that there's information that we can provide. But unfortunately, the bill that you're talking about, the Department of Commerce is working on more guidance on it, they're working on tools for us. We don't have the information yet, so at this time, we're not going to be able to provide any of that here. And it will be addressed in the company's plan update.
Okay, but, you know, other jurisdictions are going forward with this work, so I'd like that to be noted in the record that, in fact, it is possible to go forward with this work in one form or another. Just go to the Department of Commerce website.
So the counties that are required to do their update at this time, the twenty twenty-four counties have started this particular project under House Bill.
Seventeen seventeen.
That's seventeen seventeen, it's probably twelve twenty. They have been working closely with Commerce to identify and understand what is needed out of that particular legislation. In general, they are pilots to the guidance that are coming out for the twenty twenty-five and beyond counties in their updates, but the legislation specifically states that we do not have to do that particular work until our comprehensive plan update. We're not prepared at this time to do that.
Well, and I would also say, I don't think it's fair to ask staff to do that at this point, as Commerce is still working on their guidance. Because they could go spend a day, a week, a month doing this. And then Commerce comes out with their guidance in January. And all that work's gone down the tube, because they didn't do it right. So, I mean, that's my concern about this week. Once Commerce comes out and says, this is your guidance, then yeah, we can talk about it, but until then, I mean, nobody knows what Commerce is going to tell us to do.
Okay, well, I mean, that's a fair point, because it's for the county as a whole. But I can't believe that it's not possible, and I I believe jurisdictions are working on, you know, when they're doing a sub-area plan, they try to understand what are the impacts going to be on housing. I think that's being done all the time.
Well, I mean, yes, in a vague, open way, but we're not going to go out and have metrics that tell us that, you know, this is how much a house is going to cost. Because I can tell you, we heard today, average price, four hundred thousand dollars. That doesn't sound affordable housing to me, but as long as it's single-family housing, then how are we going to get much? And I think knowing a lot of people in Grand Mound, because I grew up in Toninol, that's what they want is single-family housing, they don't want, and I would add this, because we've got Olympia coming up. If we want to talk about additional housing for low cost, affordable housing, however you want to phrase it, why are we letting Olympia have almost the entire city be single-family housing? And then we're going to let Olympia tell us, because the county commissioners don't want to make a certain group of people mad, how we're going to do planning in Thurston County, because that's exactly what staff has asked us to do, is to just take Olympia's plan and accept it as our own.
Well, I I want to be clear, Commissioner Nelson, I'm not talking about that. I'm actually more concerned about displacement. I'm I'm concerned about people who are used to affordable land and affordable housing. And people who are saying they want it rural, I think that's one of the elements, in my opinion, is that it's affordable. I'm concerned about displacement. I'm not concerned about, I'm not using affordable housing as a code word for multifamily housing, for example. I've heard people talking about wanting to keep the rural character of Grand Mound. And it's actually in the goals and actions, it's like the first action is rural density. And I don't disagree with that. My concern is is displacement in Grand Mound personally, that's, that's what I'm concerned about. More than, I'm not using affordable housing as as code word for certain types of housing. I'm I'm talking about actual affordability in terms of what's a person's income and can they afford to live where they live based on the income that they have. And rolling into that is not just the price of land and rent, but it's also the price of those utilities. So, you know, I just want to be clear about that.
Commissioner Hanson, do you have anything on this?
I guess I'm at a point where I've got a lot of information here tonight, but I haven't had a chance to look at it. So trying to give input without listening to what people have said, it's kind of hard for me.
Well, maybe what we should do at this point, then, since we're getting late in our meeting, is give a little bit of direction to staff on where we would like to explore options and information. Doesn't sound like there's going to be a housing report. I, go ahead.
Do we have any idea, the changes, commercial changes, industrial? Do we have any idea with the property owners, and do you have that property? We can, no way for us to figure out what kind of jobs within industry.
No, we need to make sure that we don't get down to that project level, that is a permitting, which is a different side of it. So what we can talk about is what can be allowed there under those different land uses, what types of industries could come in there? And we can talk about and extrapolate what that means to, but we can't actually talk about what they propose. Because they may not. Because they may not.
Key to the housing, knowing how. You could have a warehouse and that's a bunch of machines that pick pick the product off. The shelf and whatnot, and and you have five employees on the computer. Or you could have something that that actually employs people with a living wage. And, you know, looking at the future, I think affordable housing and everything else. That's how you look at it.
The main, the main issue at this time is that um when we're considering rezoning those properties, we. The county is not allowed to condition any of these properties to hold them to what they are proposing. So ultimately, whatever we rezone it to, they have the opportunity to zone it or to uh to apply for whatever is allowed in that zone. Uh whatever the range is.
Are we allowed to make any recommendations on? Shrinking areas of UGA?
Make the recommendation?
Or have that discussion, is that revoked or can we talk about?
Again, you can have that discussion, but it is outside the scope and we would not be doing any analysis on that. It would be something to talk into a new.
On on uh another issue. I I don't know if you guys put this together, but if you could, it'd be great. On some of the environmental concerns, especially when we are looking at the one project in the northwest corner. Where if it was moved out of mining, active mining, especially as they get towards groundwater and moved into some other use. The dumb guy in me says this might be a real good thing environmentally and for a lot of other reasons. Especially when we do have a lot of groundwater issues down that direction that have been of concern. If if Kevin Hanson or somebody else at the county was able to kind of give us the thumbnail of. Cost benefits of doing something like that, I think that would be really helpful to hear from an in-house expert.
Good second man.
So we can look into what that.
That's not too terribly difficult, I think that would be good information to have. Anybody else have any wish lists for staff to bring us back information? Go ahead, Commissioner Pestinger.
Thank you, Chair. I just sent to Polly a link to the Washington State RCW for Comprehensive Plans. Dash mandatory elements, it's RCW thirty six dot seven zero A dot zero seven zero. And I mean, it lists. A large number of elements, mandatory elements, uh it's it's approximately two and a half pages long. But I mean, right out of the gate, it starts out with things about affordable housing, uh all range of housing. It does reference that you would want to have information from the Department of Commerce about this, but even separate from that section. About the Department of Commerce, it also says. That you've got information needs for units for moderate, low, very low and extremely low income households. Uh emergency housing and permanent support and housing and emergency shelters, things like that. It also, as this Chair Casino was just talking about, has significant descriptions about mandatory evaluations of. Water impacts, groundwater and the protection and preservation of groundwater and all water supplies. It also has incredibly detailed requirements related to uh impacts, e- equity impacts, racial impacts. Not just coming up with things, plans that will not have a negative impact to traditionally. Minority people, but that we are rectifying historical negative impacts. Um that were not uh intended, and so. I I would encourage, I would think like. Commissioner Wheatley has been asking for, and that it sounds like the rest of us are asking for in other areas. We would have segments of research here about each of these areas that are mandatory requirements on any comprehensive plan and I'm. I'm presuming that a subarea plan is just a sub of a comprehensive plan. Um so correct me if I'm wrong, but then finally, my last statement. My my final last statement is that um, you know, those those numbers about average housing prices of four hundred and ten thousand. For single, I heard the word single family housing there, um does that include the manufactured homes? I heard there's trailer parks in that area, um those go for a hundred, hundred and twenty thousand. Whereas, you know, y- you could have half the houses being a hundred and twenty thousand and half the houses being six hundred and eighty thousand. And you'd still end up with an average of four hundred thousand, so uh that number can be misleading, it doesn't mean that they're all four hundred thousand dollar homes.
Thank you, Commissioner Hanson, I do want to address the comp plan elements first.
Sure, so those are for the comprehensive plan. That what he, Commissioner Pestinger quoted is for the uh are the changes the legislature made this past legislation round. That are required upon um the comprehensive plan update. So those are the things that we will be looking at specifically, thank you for highlighting those during our comprehensive plan update. Which will be part of the scope of work um in for twenty forty five.
But our subarea plan today does not need to have each one of those elements included.
Correct, uh we're bringing the subarea plan up to the comprehensive plan, the twenty nineteen comprehensive plan information. There's more information which we have received from um TRPC about the land analysis. The most up-to-date population information, that's what we'll um we've identified and updated in there. But as we look at housing in those specific areas that were um quoted in the law. We have to do that at a county level, so we will be working with TRPC and our sister jurisdictions. To work all that out because there are portions that have to be done appropriately for the law.
Yeah, so um I I hear all of that. And so maybe one, a- another approach to this because just as we did, just as Commissioner Pestinger just kind of brought up. Now, there's a little bit of. It's hard to understand what's needed for subarea plan, you know, versus what's needed for comprehensive plan in general. How does one roll into the other or not? And I think one thing in the draft that would be helpful, that I think was stronger in the old draft. Than is than is in the new draft is the statement of purpose. I think that the statement of purpose is inadequate as it is currently, and I would really like to see it expanded. I would like it to make it really clear why the county chose to. Have this optional element of a subarea plan for Grand Mound. If I'd like that to be made really, really clear, you know, to us, you know, for further discussion. And also in the draft, this is is a really clear statement about. Why is there a subarea plan? Because I think people are coming at it from all kinds of directions and expectations, but we don't have a real clear statement. My understanding from reading the history and reading the old plan is that it kind of. There are a couple of purposes that I think are still true, one of them is to preserve the rural character. More generally of the area. Um and that Grand Mound, because of the aquifer, this is my understanding, and it it's sort of lost in this current draft. But it, and tell me if I'm wrong, but one of the reasons for creating a subarea was because growth could not happen. Without having the water and sewer system put into place because of the critical aquifer. That it was decided that a subarea was needed in order to be able to pay for the utility. To make the growth possible, and and I would like to see that kind of utility element. Brought out more, I would like to understand what the plan is for how. It's being made as efficient and affordable as possible, who's paying for it? Um I think I mentioned this before at an earlier meeting, that you know, the the capital facilities plan, I think includes. Grand Mound um utility development in it. How does this impact the people who are going to be living with, you know, who who's going to pay for it? Do the people who are moving in or the people who are living there now have to shoulder the this burden of growth? While, say, Rochester or, you know, people elsewhere don't, or, you know, how does that work, how is it fair? Um how does the Grand Mound Plan um interact with the Rochester SubArea Plan? You know, there's a lot of history there um that to say that it's just there to provide for a guide for future growth loses. You know, why is there a subarea there? It seems to me that it's to protect the aquifer by promoting efficient and affordable utility development. It's to uh, you know, I think for the county, it's to, UGAs are usually used to concentrate growth so that. They beat the sustainable Thurston targets for having growth within urban areas and not in rural areas. How does change since the first round of that, you know? Have has this draft plan really considered, that's why I keep hammering on housing, like. If that is now a major factor in the way count the county's thinking about this particular UGA of Grand Mound, it it's a place. For residential growth. What what are the goals for the subarea in terms of being a subarea for taking residential growth? And then um when it comes to commercial and industrial development. Could it be more clear about what the purpose of that commercial industrial development is? Is it, and how is it, how is it to be done in a way that is best to support the rural character? Like, how can it be the most efficient use of resources, how can it protect the? The rural character, the waters, the aquifer, the other uses, the traditional, you know, the 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 salmon and the shahelis and all of that stuff. You know, commercial and industrial development can have a purpose, a subarea purpose that's geared to the place where it is. And we don't have a sense of. The planning thrust of this for that is, what is commercial industrial development in this subarea supposed to be about? Um I think it'd be really helpful to get some kind of statement about that. Um and to put it within a statement of purpose. You know, just, I think it would clarify a lot of things for us. Yeah, sorry.
So mine is a sort of rebuttal to some of the replies that were made to my comment. Um and I agree with what Hunter Wheatley, uh Commissioner Wheatley saying. But also just, we've heard, we just heard a ton of public comments, we also read a ton of public comments. There's a great amount of interest from the public, you know, both the people that are, you know, the active uh property owners who want changes made as well as the. Community members that live in the neighboring areas, uh there's a huge amount of public interest in this, a lot of people attended that. That work session and open house and all of that. And what we're hearing repeatedly from people who want or uh want us to expand the urban growth area. And for those that do not want all of those changes to be made, is we're hearing, you know, growth is coming, growth is happening whether we like it or not. Changes are happening whether we like it or not, we have to be smart about the planning on all of this. And I would agree, we want to do good planning here, um there's already been planning done, some people are asking us to disregard the planning. And the the work that had already been done in that direction, um but but what I'm hearing now is. Hey, we've got these new recommendations from the legislature for mandatory elements for comprehensive plans, but. Wipe the brow, phew, we don't have to implement all of them. What I'm seeing in these mandatory elements or new mandatory elements for comprehensive plans is effectively better planning. That historically, we did some planning, we learned that we made some mistakes, that we had some oversight areas in the way we did planning. Some of those things had extremely negative impacts for people of color in some areas, so. There's a number of factors, we failed to properly look at preserving farmland, we failed to properly look at preserving, protecting water. We failed to, you know, properly transition for housing um and build and needed housing of all types. But, okay, that doesn't apply to us right now, however, that doesn't mean we can't consider it. It doesn't mean that we are precluded from using these better planning methods, so. Even though it might not be a requirement for us, I still think it's, the public is asking us to consider these things. And they are wise things for us to consider if we are doing good planning.
I'm just kind of curious if you can either point me to to it or. Provide it for us, like an economic forecast, what are the job needs, are there any? Do we need to have all this extra, I I mean, I'm not against industrials growth or whatever, but is it? I know that, I you know, we talked about the housing piece and that seemed to be kind of okay, at least for right now. From what I hear, the excess, the that should move a little bit of an excess, but what is the economic? Forecasting us?
I don't think that there is anything available um that would really get into the details. The economic status of Grand Mound. The billable lands report, its main goal is to address uh population growth. Focus on housing, but there is also uh the non-housing growth. So it does address whether or not there is uh land available uh for the anticipated. Non-residential uses, uh it combines industrial and commercial lands. But same with residential, it it states that there is land to support the anticipated population growth. But it it doesn't get down to the detail of um exactly what's there, exactly what what the commercial businesses are, who's employed. That would definitely be something that would require additional funds, it would require a chief of the board.
Where in the timeline of the next few years, people's CPA date is going to hit?
The the industrial land.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. So that um contract, so I'm going to back up George, everybody including the um outside role. So the Board of County Commissioners put on the bucket, the industrial land study, um we have gone out on RFP and. We give those uh proposals and selected a contractor, and the board has um. Approved a contract um that was done last week or the week before, so just recently. So that work is just now beginning, we have a timeline um for that to do the study that will do just what you asked for. Does that market study to see what is needed, um what we have, and then um. Provide some um information about how does that, how does? That information then jive with what we already have in our comprehensive plan and in our development code. And provide some um policy recommendations that will then back to the company's plan update and move forward um there. So we're hoping to complete the people process and market analysis this coming year in twenty twenty three. That information will then get um folded into our comprehensive plan update, which will run through twenty twenty four.
So you want to have it done before comp plan update?
This particular.
No, no, not not Grand Mound, but you want to have industrial.
Yes.
Before.
Absolutely, before comp plan.
The chance of getting industrial done before Grand Mound are zero.
Correct.
And and the idea is, Grand Mound needs action now, not wait for more and more more reports, but. So we will see that industrial lands report between the Grand Mound Plan and the Comp Plan. Is the idea, let's put it.
I just wonder, then, when does Grand Mound Plan come come back again?
Well, we did it again in Comp Plan, when we, we could make adjustments during.
We can make adjustments during Comp Plan if that is part of the schedule work that the Board of County Commissioners wishes to do, yes.
To just touch on what Commissioner Pestinger said, and I I. I'm moved by his comment that if we know better and can do better, we should do better, and. And so I I agree with him, and and I would hope that if we can't get it done. Now, that that we do open this up again and look at it in the in the comp plan. Because I I think that we're going to end up with a with an incomplete work product here.
For sure, really?
Yeah, well, I just, I'm looking at the. Yeah, well, I just I'm looking at the the docket item here. And I mean, what we're really being asked to do is look for consistency with current market trends, which I don't see how we do that without the data. And then update for consistency with recommendations, the transportation study, and I wanted to make sure we touched on that too. I'm not sure I feel, you know, I I would like to spend more time talking about how transportation connects to all of these other elements. I mean, it came up in some of the public comment, you know, concerns about congestion, you know, concerns about safety, things like that. I'm not sure I'm ready yet to say that I've had a chance to really think about the consistency of the plan with the transportation studies. So maybe you could come back to us with a little more detailed discussion about that. Um, and then we haven't, uh, getting back to code amendments, that's another universe where all of these things we're talking about don't make it into the code amendments. It seems like the code amendments are very much based on the old code amendments. There's a heck of a lot of discussion about signage, for example. And I don't think that's where people's priorities are right now, um, in terms of what they what they want to see in the in the guidelines. You know, I'd I'd like to see stuff about, I mean, for example, I was just looking at Tom Waters design guidelines and they they do stuff for how to control traffic, like if you have a drive through, you know, what? What should the drive through be like to control the way that traffic moves? You know, on the street and through the drive through or, you know, if you're going to have denser housing, what what about parking? You know, what are the what are the guidelines there? I mean, it just seems like there's a whole universe of guidelines that we haven't really had a chance to that that aren't making it into this, and it's a sub area plan, and I get that. But again, that goes back to that problem of, well, what's the sub area plan for? And then how is that going to impact what we should care about in the guidelines? And um, and there's some stuff we haven't. I I have a really specific question about irrigation, like do we still really want to require irrigation? Like, are we concerned about water consumption at this point? You know, what do we do about requirements around, um, uh, climate change? What do we do about saying things like we should have electric vehicle charging stations, multifamily housing? You know, where where does all of that come into, um, into the guidelines rather than just signage and things like that?
Right, so there are about ten different ideas in that.
Yeah.
So first of all, like parking, like parking is one of the design guidelines listed in here. I do talk about electric charging.
Oh, you do, okay.
Yes, that is mentioned. Uh, that is actually one of proposals to be added to make this better uh, and more updated. And then also for designing, like a drive through, that wouldn't be done in the design guidelines. That would be done more, I think, boat standards, public works. We're not trying to engineer traffic safety in the design guidelines. And so that's what one of the reasons why we're wanting to re- re- design guidelines rather than development guidelines. Because it's really more about place making and appearance and the the actual movement of people and their place within. So I do want to touch on a few things. Did you get a chance to look through the parking section? Has it mentioned with multifamily?
Yeah, I've read the whole thing, yeah.
Okay, so there is talk about how we structure parking. Um, and this is actually the first time we've got to talk about the development guidelines since we started in September. So I would love to hear your suggestions because this has been untouched.
Well, that seems like a pretty big topic in this meeting running a little bit long. I do want to get Commissioner Day's question, but before we do deep dives into any particular one thing, I I I wanted to kind of task you guys a little bit with what we've wanted to talk about, but I don't want to be here till midnight. So we're going to move on to Commissioner Day.
Yeah. Um, so I I think, you know, along the lines of some of what Joel, Helen, Kevin have been talking about. It feels odd to be taking on this sub area plan right as we're about to move like a new comprehensive plan that has essentially a new regime. And we're we're going to be tying it to the like consistency with the old comprehensive plan. And it'll very quickly be out of date and not aligned with the comprehensive plan unless we are perfectly clear on it. That concerns me, uh, just generally, and it it feels to me like an argument to suggest no changes and to wait until the comprehensive plan is changed and then take it up and review the Grand Mound sub area plan as a whole. I understand that could, and I think that would be probably the best in the best interest of the county. I know how frustrating that would be for the folks who have been waiting for this to happen for years and by no fault of their own. We've now run up to this timeline where we're about to make these changes and they will be almost instantly like not consistent with the comprehensive plan. Um, and then I think along the lines of kind of what Kevin was talking about and I think what Helen wants. I want to really sympathize with like how difficult it would be to be to have staffed and planned and organized and all of your thinking and work around the old regime and then be asked to expedite that into like really quickly doing these kind of analyses that aren't required yet. They're probably still trying to figure out how to staff and do, waiting for guidance, like how difficult that would be. But I think there is in the R C W a framework and a series of things that it asks us to consider. And I wonder if there is a way to do more of a qualitative analysis that's, you know, not quite wild speculation, but also not fully like in-depth analysis. If we might be able to bring pull some of those elements out, get some best professional judgment on how it might operate, given some of the changes and do something that takes us a step in that direction without having to go all the way into it, but just kind of light touch, um, if there's an opportunity to do that when we're thinking about how to understand these changes kind of comprehensively. And it would also keep us from being wildly out of alignment with the complan if we at least considered them and probably moved it in the right direction, even if we don't get it right.
Well, that would that would support the argument of doing the Grand Mound now and then also do complan. It's better to take two steps towards the right direction than one now in twenty twenty four than to take one big step in twenty twenty four.
Only if we're prepared to do it in a way that actually we can move in that direction.
If we're moving in the right direction.
I think to Eric's point, I don't think there's going to be major changes in our goals and policies, which is what the complan and the sub are based on. I think there's going to be major changes to actual code. Like we're going, somebody is going to come through and watch this piece of property or this area rezoned to something. You know, the goals, I think the goals and policies, there's going to be, there'll be tweaks in this. But I don't think it's going to be, goals and policy is going to require us to throw up the whole old complan and bring in an all new one. There, I think they're pretty. Every time that I've been involved in this, that we've done goals and policies, it's been, you know, move them a little bit one way or the other, but not just complete radical change. And I could point to the affordable housing deal. One of the goals currently of the original Growth Management Act was housing. And that started with considering affordable housing. So there's thirteen goals, actually, I think there's fourteen now, but those are things that we're supposed to consider no matter what. We, I mean, quite frankly, I consider how every time we do one of these, I think about, you know, what's this going to do? But you have to think about housing, you have to think about natural resources. You have to think about private property rights. I mean, there's a long list of things that we have to consider. And it's always kind of a balancing act, you know, because obviously you can't just go out and allow people to build enough houses that everybody can afford houses and still keep your own space. Because those are going to butt up against each other at some point.
You have more?
No, I think that's, I think.
You folks down there? Commissioner Pestner, do you have any more?
No, thank you.
All right, we're going to wrap that item up for this evening, and thank you very much. I hope that we gave you a long enough list to stay busy, but not so much to overwhelm. So move on to our next item, which is a SCAP update.
Yes. First update is that I am going to invite you the proposed changes that we talked about to the rules and procedures. One of those changes is just changing the address to where we will be holding our meetings coming from here. The other one is of in relationship to remote attendance. This is draft language. Please mark it up. We may not get to this in our next P C meeting, which is the our next regular meeting, which is December seventh. Um, but I wanted you to have this, um, we will have to make the changes to the actual location so that we can have meetings at our new station from January first. So I'm going to pass these around.
We're going to.
That through this and you can see what I'm talking about.
But we're going to save the discussion for this. Save the discussion for later, all right.
Can you email me a copy?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do we need to have a discussion on a December seventh meeting?
We need to have a discussion on December. Sir, this one discussion on December eighth in general. So our office is moving, yay, rah rah, um, come December seventh. So we will be getting our materials that we need to start packing at noon on the seventh. So we will have a meeting on the seventh here. We will be a little bit shuffled. Please bear with us. We will not be able to have a meeting on the twenty first. Those four rooms will need to be closed in order to take things down so that they can actually move them. I am keeping, I'm asking to keep the meeting on the seventh so that we can actually create the packets and send them out to you the week before and not the week of us moving. Because if we moved it to the fourteenth, we would then be driving back here because we would be over in the building and be making the packets for you in the same day that we have to start packing. And we have a hot day and a half to pack up our entire office.
Are we expecting to have a December twenty first meeting then?
We are not, so that's what, yeah.
So December seventh will be the last of the year.
That, all of that to say, December seventh is our last meeting.
Okay, we'll start back up in January at the atrium.
Right, we can discuss January now or at our next regular meeting. Because my suggestion would be to cancel the two regular meetings and create special meetings so that we can shift them down into January. So you don't have your first meeting.
What are the proposed dates for that?
Oh, shoot. The proposed dates would be.
First would be the eleventh, the twenty fifth.
Correct. Correct.
Looking at your calendars, how do you feel about the eleventh and twenty fifth?
Versus the fourth and.
All right. How about you? Uh, the eleventh and the fourteenth was instead of the fourth.
Eleven to twenty one, Ben.
No, no, four.
We don't want you to come in on the fourteenth, that is the second. And that will be at the atrium.
Yeah, those, all right, so, yeah, we'll 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 do those. Okay, I'm going to, we now our our agenda, so we're going to talk about the calendar. The counter for the November thirtieth meeting, which would be a special meeting with over CPA one, which is Olympia Joint Plan Joint Public Hearing. Pretty important one for everyone to be to, so I hope we can all be there. Is there anybody that's not expecting to be at the November thirtieth special meeting, public hearing, Olympia Joint Plan? It's going to be.
It's going to be here.
It'll be here. Everybody, I'll make that. Well, it starts at six thirty, but the meeting, the the meeting starts at six thirty and the hearing starts at seven, right?
I believe they, oh, yes. So we can push it back to six forty five, you want six forty five, sorry.
Okay, well, everybody please be here at six forty five, we'll hold the meeting at seven o'clock. Or the hearing at seven o'clock on November thirtieth here. Hope to see everybody, it sounds like you will. On December seventh, last meeting in this room, we'll be doing Grand Mound period plan update. Everybody expect to be here? All right, and then, of course, we're going to be moving our our meetings in January to the eleventh and the twenty fifth with a scheduled to be to our topics to be determined later. Does anybody have anything for the good of the order?